Good afternoon. Today's public hearing is hereby called back to order. And the time is now 1:00 PM tomorrow's standard time. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today in this joint public hearing on Bill Number 179-38COR, which is an act to amend Chapter 65 of Title 10, to amend Section 14.107 of Article 14.1, Chapter 1, Title 5, and to amend Section 22402 of Article 4, Chapter 22, Title 5, all of the Guam Code annotated relative to abolishing the Office of Civil Defense and strengthening the administration of emergency management functions by creating the Bureau of Emergency Management within the Guam Fire Department and assigning responsibilities thereto. I would like to again thank the Finance Committee Chairman, Senator Chris Duñez, for co-facilitating today's discussion on the bill. Thank you, Senator Duñez, for being with us this afternoon. And for the record, the following entities were invited to participate in this joint public hearing, including the Guam Fire Department, the Office of Homeland Security, the Office of Civil Defense, the Marianas Regional Fusion Center, Guam Recovery Office, Guam Police Department, the Judiciary of Guam, the Office of the Attorney General, Department of Administration, the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Guam National Guard, the Civil Service Commission, the Guam Department of Public Works, the Office of Public Accountability, and Mr. David Fukatomi, private citizen. For the record, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research provided a fiscal note on Bill Number 179-38COR dated September 25, 2025. BBMR wrote that should the proposed legislation be enacted into law, there is no funding allocated for the newly proposed Bureau of Emergency Management from the appropriations to GEFD for FY 2026 as enumerated in the Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Act. Funding will have to be offset against other general fund appropriations for FY 2026 to satisfy the mandated $1 million annual appropriation in the bill and any funding requirements for the proposed bureau, potentially impacting other government programs. Further, it should be noted that local and federal funds must not be commingled in the same fund. The bill seeks to centralize financial resources for disaster response and recovery, including federal funds received under the Stafford Act. The Guam Recovery Office, which the bill states shall be administered by the Governor's Office, currently manages the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Program, which provides federal funds to assist in disaster recovery efforts. Reimbursements from FEMA must be used to liquidate the claims submitted and should not be subject to further or alternate appropriation by the Guam Legislature. Moreover, under the Public Assistance Grant Program, FEMA reimburses rather than provides funds upfront, requiring immediate expenditure tracking to maintain compliance. The legislative appropriation requirement in the bill may delay reimbursement requests, leading to cash flow challenges when funding disaster recovery projects. Potential delays in processing could result in ineligibility for future federal funding. Finally, BBMR wrote that it reached out to the Guam Fire Department and the Office of Civil Defense for responses to the bill. However, no comments were provided to the bureau. At this time, the chair will invite individuals who wish to testify on Bill Number 179-38 to take a seat before the Public Safety and Finance Committees. Before speaking, individuals who wish to make a presentation shall first be recognized by the co-chairs and shall state their name for record purposes. The order of questioning will begin with the panel of senators who shall have, each have five minutes to ask their questions. The time allotted to each senator does not include responses that are provided by those testifying. Personal inferences about the character or motive of any senator or any individual commenting is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room for this afternoon's joint public hearing. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form or decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony or may be asked to leave or be escorted and removed from the room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present here in the public hearing room. Before proceeding with my opening remarks as the author of Bill Number 179-38COR, I would like to take this opportunity to invite the chairman of the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, Senator Chris Duñez, to offer his remarks to today's proceedings. Senator, thank you very much for being with us this afternoon.
Subsidiary Chairman Gumbetalto, and thank you to all of the folks who showed up today to testify and to listen to the proposal before us. Of course, my role as the Office of Finance and Budget Chair requires that should this legislation go forward in any form or fashion, of course, it would associate itself with budgetary requirements, appropriations, and the like. And of course, being that we currently have a standalone structure and the possibility, or the discussion at least, in commingling with the Guam Fire Department, of course, it would mean a transfer of resources and the like. So of course, that's my primary role here. Also, I'd just like to mention to everyone in attendance, we do have our speaker, BJ Cruz, as well now the public auditor. Many of the discussion points that we're having at this point is because of audit findings that really have, let's just be straightforward, right? Very not so glaring reviews of the past several years and millions of dollars in lost resources, non-reimbursed resources, requiring the general fund at this point in time to carry the burden to the tune of about $8.2 million. So we know that folks are working on recovering those resources. Some have been lost and probably will not be reimbursed. But clearly, we need to start thinking, at least, first of all, on how to shore up the resources within Office of Civil Defense and Homeland Security. And also structurally, is it relevant to today in terms of what its mission is? And is there additional ways to professionalize and seek diversification of the organization? So we appreciate you coming forward to give us your ideas and your thoughts. And of course, we'll move forward as a committee to mark up these bills and see what the end result will be. But maybe you all can appreciate the fact that, I think you read the same newspapers and see the same reports coming out, that, you know, clearly what's going on now isn't working, or certainly hasn't over the last several years. And structural change, or at least, at the least and at the minimum, corrective action being displayed that will change the tide and the way things are going, you know, to bring confidence back within the organization and bring confidence within the people of Guam. Today, this morning, on another bill, I just wanted to be clear that I was a little surprised and kind of disappointed in hearing currently that the Fusion Center has three individual members that are associated with the Fusion Center only that have security clearances. That's a huge concern for me personally because in any situation whereby we have an event to which the Fusion Center would act as a, not a single source, but certainly a vital source to providing key information on how to respond to man-made and otherwise, particularly being the area of the world that we live in, you know, in the Indo-Pacific area and the tip of the spear, as they call us sometimes, emergency response to any incident or any kind of threat to Guam, I believe would require the briefing to all members of public safety responding. And it would be critical, in my opinion, that all members that are part of the Fusion Center be able to sit in on a briefing that is brought forward in a way where the individual sitting at the table would require a security clearance. I say that because, to me, most in this room actually operate under a chain of command, whether it's your work with the paramilitary organization that you have in law enforcement and also public safety. But also, you know, in many of your roles, many of you serve in the guard and the reserves and other high-level positions and clearly understand what it means to get a briefing in a classified setting in order to be able to understand the roles and responsibilities going forward to respond and to be able to be capable to work inter-agency. Many of you here know that the Fusion Center was created years ago because of operational inefficiencies nationwide responding to incidents and incidents of terror and bad actors bringing about things to our shores that we had to repel back and fight back against. And what was found to be, many times, was lack of interoperable communication within multi-law enforcement groups. And so clearly, I think most of you, if not all, can sympathize with that thought process. And we're going to continue to work with you on that, as many in this room. And we know the entities that are in the Fusion Center are clearly those that have law enforcement responsibilities and public safety. So we appreciate all the heads of these organizations and those that are present today. And I think, I hear and I know that many within your ranks have those clearances. And so I just hope that if anything we get out of this going forward in the coming weeks and months is that we realize that that critical organization is manned with individuals that can get the highest level of briefing in the event of any type of incident or the like. So with that, Mr. Chair, I thought this morning was very productive. I'm sure this afternoon will be as well. And then we'll take the bills forward as they do, you know, purport to make transformational change. So what that's going to look like in the end, we'll see. But we appreciate you being here and we want you to share your thoughts with us so the committee can continue moving forward. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to the hearing.
Yes, thank you so much, Chairman Duñez. I also want to recognize my colleagues that have joined us this afternoon. Thank you, Senator Theresa Chalai, for being with us this afternoon. And also, I want to recognize the vice chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and the Guam National Guard, the vice speaker of the Guam Legislature, Tony Ada, is here with us this afternoon. Again, thank you so much, Vice Speaker, for being with us. So I'll go ahead and begin with my opening remarks. First off, hafiday and good afternoon to everybody here. Emergency management plays a critical role during emergencies and disasters, focusing on the coordination and support of the response, as well as planning for recovery and long-term mass care and economic considerations. To me, an emergency management program's wide range of activities creates a challenge in identifying where a community like ours should invest in its respective program. In 2025, this has never been more important to the government of Guam. Changes by the federal government since January to include a new paradigm that takes the role of the Federal Emergency Management Agency and places much more responsibility of emergency management at the feet of state and territorial governments like ours. Less than flattering audits by the Office of Public Accountability that has in at least three, two centered on the Guam Office of Civil Defense and one the fiscal year 2023 government of Guam financial audit that led to more questions than answers on how critical emergency management dollars were spent for those entrusted to always be ready. We live in a country of laws, due process is well underway. Also, a mission check on May 6, 2025 of the Emergency Operations Center was evidence that our readiness was not where each and every one of this community wants it to be. Though there have been great progress on issues identified in that visit to the EOC five months ago, the confidence in a critical agency has since been shaken to its very core. The Emergency Management Accreditation Program, or EMAP, defines emergency management as, quote, "a system that provides for management and coordination of prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery activities for all hazards." In 2025, we all must protect the government of Guam's efforts to align with EMAP standards. We must build back up the credibility of the government of Guam with the federal government in regards to emergency management programs. We must restore pride back into a critical mission that once saw Guam lead the nation in preparedness and recovery. Bill Number 179-38 can do that to protect the alignment with standards for excellence and accountability in emergency management and homeland security programs. This proposal seeks to modernize our emergency management system and places the burden of leadership in this area to the Guam Fire Department, our Guam Fire Department. For 40 years, GFD has evolved from a division inside the Department of Public Safety in the 30 years prior to a world-class response agency with the structure needed for emergency management now and well into the future. This modernization act will give GFD preparedness and response mandates in a new Bureau of Emergency Management. DPW will assume hazard mitigation responsibility for the government of Guam, an agency recognized for their work with federal highway and related funding. The Office of the Governor of Guam will retain all recovery work as open disasters remain, to include the COVID-19 pandemic and typhoon Mawar that struck Guam in 2023. It also creates a new emergency management fund. These endeavors are not cheap by any stretch of the imagination. It is to prepare Guam for a new reality relative to emergency response. Use local money and resources to take care of an emergent activity and have a source that can be watched closely by we as policymakers and importantly, the Guam taxpayer. This level of accountability is desired by this community, which is questioned where critical emergency management funds have gone in the recent past. I've likened it in the past to a catcher's glove, if you will, to where we as a government can receive future emergency management dollars, modeled after the great state of Florida, who has led the nation in this particular type of effort. Other states are following suit, especially with what's happening with FEMA and pretty much the activities up on Capitol Hill in Washington, DC. This policy was crafted with great care to ensure that all emergency activities are factored into this new bureau and more importantly, the sharing of the burden across the government of Guam family. This branch recognizes that emergency management programs have a broad focus coordinating and supporting tactical, strategic, and logistical efforts during an emergency or a disaster response. We know that they also promote mitigation activities to lessen the impact of disasters. These programs are so very important to educate residents, partners, and employees in preparing for emergencies, both at home and at work. We all must see this effort for what it is, a modernization of a critical government of Guam mandate. This is not punitive, this is not reactive, this is proactive to protect the life and safety of all of Guam's residents, a modern take to one of our most important functions of the government of Guam. And I thank you all for being here and for the time, Mr. Chair, to open on this critical public policy. And before we begin with the testimonies, those who have signed in to provide verbal testimony, again, they're asked to, again, please state your name for the record, if you could, the name of the organization you're titled, that you're representing, and whether they support or oppose Bill Number 179-38. So thank you very much, and we are going to start. I know we have someone online, but I want to start to my left with Esther. If you can begin, we'll go left to right if we can. Thank you so much.
Hafiday, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I am Esther Aguey, and I am the Guam Homeland Security Advisor, and I work out of the Office of Homeland Security. Buenos dias, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I respectfully submit this testimony in opposition to Bill Number 179-38. While the intent to strengthen Guam's emergency management framework is understood and deeply appreciated, this measure would instead undermine effective emergency operations, contradict federal best practices, and jeopardize the island's eligibility for critical federal funding. FEMA's national guidance and longstanding best practices emphasize that emergency management agencies must operate as independent entities that report directly to the governor. This independence is not symbolic, it is essential. Emergency management must coordinate across all sectors, including fire, police, public works, health, education, utilities, and military agencies. Once subordinated to a single department, such as the Guam Fire Department, the authority to coordinate peer agencies is diminished, creating structural inefficiencies and jurisdictional confusion. Bill 178-38 would further impose an impossible dual-handed burden on the fire chief, requiring one individual to manage both fire operations and comprehensive emergency management simultaneously. This is operationally unrealistic. During a major disaster such as a category four typhoon, the fire chief's immediate duty is to deploy fire companies, safeguard firefighter safety, and respond to emergencies. Simultaneously, as the proposed emergency management director, that same person would be expected to activate and manage the Emergency Operations Center, coordinating shelters for displaced residents, direct resource allocation, liaise with FEMA and federal partners, oversee damage assessments, and prepare disaster declaration requests. And no single individual can effectively fulfill both roles without one responsibility suffering, and most likely, emergency management, as fire operations will naturally and rightly take precedence. Moreover, emergency management extends far beyond the scope of fire services. It encompasses preparedness, mitigation, recovery, and long-term resilience, areas that require years of planning, inter-agency coordination, and federal compliance. Fire departments excel in response, which constitutes less than 10% of comprehensive emergency management work, but they are not structured for the administrative and strategic requirements of recovery and mitigation. Subordinating emergency management to the Guam Fire Department would also endanger Guam's standing with federal granters. The Office of Public Accountability Audit revealed that $8.4 million in federal reimbursements were withheld because FEMA imposed restrictions due to non-compliance. Converting an executive-level office into a bureau within another department might send a troubling signal to our federal partners suggesting reduced territorial priority, diminished coordination authority, and potential capacity limitations. Federal program officers evaluate organizational independence and professional focus when awarding grants. Emergency management grants require full-time, specialized personnel, not collateral duties assigned within a response-driven agency. The transition proposed in Bill 179-38 also presents significant operational risks. The March 2026 implementation deadline, less than five months away, falls dangerously close to the height of typhoon season. Ongoing federal grants would be mid-execution during this transition, creating serious compliance and continuity challenges. Personnel transfers, equipment reallocation, and records mitigation risk the loss of institutional knowledge and could prompt experienced professionals to leave the agency during a period of uncertainty. A far more effective and less disruptive alternative exists. And as menial as it may sound, the legislature could think of modernizing Guam's emergency management system simply by renaming the Office of Civil Defense to the Guam Emergency Management Agency, GIMA, maintaining its independence under the Office of the Governor. This approach honors the legislature's intent to modernize outdated terminology while preserving Guam's alignment with federal standards. The revised structure would include a confirmed administrator with clearly defined qualifications and a fixed term, supported by a professional workforce dedicated to preparedness, mitigation, response, and recovery. Homeland security functions would continue under the Homeland Security Advisor, while the fire chief would remain focused on firefighting and emergency medical response. This model could possibly strengthen leadership, preserve coordination authority, and improve grant management capacity, all without the risks posed by Bill 179-38. Mr. Chair, in conclusion, Bill 179-38 reflects a sincere effort, an applauding effort, to strengthen Guam's emergency management framework. However, I must say, aspects of its proposed structure may unintentionally create challenges that could undermine those very goals. It contradicts established federal guidance, establishes, creates untenable dual-handed leadership expectations, threatens vital federal funding, and fragments the coordination essential for comprehensive disaster management. And everyone in this room will agree, Guam deserves a modern, independent, and professional emergency management agency capable of addressing the full spectrum of hazards, from natural disasters to cyber threats and national security contingencies. Renaming and strengthening the existing Office of Civil Defense into the Guam Emergency Management Agency achieves modernization and operational efficiency without sacrificing autonomy, federal compliance, or disaster readiness. And it is for these reasons I strongly urge this committee to reject Bill Number 179-38 and instead work collaboratively with emergency management professionals, the Office of the Governor, and federal partners to develop solutions that strengthen, rather than subordinate, Guam's emergency management capability. Send uncle unas subsumasi for the privilege and the opportunity to provide this testimony. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Esther, for your testimony today. At this time, I want to welcome up to the dais the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, Speaker Frank Bloss, Jr. Thank you, Speaker, for being with us this afternoon. Moving on, you have testimony? If you can, please, go ahead.
Hafiday, Honorable Chairman Gumbetalto, Speaker Bloss, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Duñez, and Senator Chalai, and members of the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Guam National Guard. My name is Lucia Perez, and I work with the Office of Homeland Security, Office of Civil Defense. In this testimony, I am speaking in my capacity as ESF2, cybersecurity and critical infrastructure. And I thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in Bill Number 179-38. And I thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in Bill Number 179-38COR. I respectfully oppose Bill 179-38 in its entirety. The bill would abolish the Office of Civil Defense and place emergency management functions inside the Guam Fire Department by creating a Bureau of Emergency Management under the fire chief. This structural change is inconsistent with Guam's statutory framework, best practices in incident management, and the prevailing model in many states where emergency management is an executive-level coordinating function kept distinct from fire, EMS, rescue, and NG 911 operations. And for the record, I did submit a written testimony that's six pages long, but I'm giving you the four-minute version. One of the first reasons is the loss of executive coordination. OCD operates under the direct authority of the governor and is structured to coordinate a whole-of-government response from cabinet agencies and autonomous bodies to our federal and private sector partners. Embedding these functions within the Guam Fire Department narrows that scope and risks subordinating coordination to a single tactical discipline. Emergency management is not just about a response, it is about policy, mitigation, inter-agency collaboration, and recovery across sectors. Second reason is a conflict with our NIMS or EOC doctrine. FEMA's national incident management system draws a crucial line between on-scene command and emergency operations support. Placing coordination roles within GFD blurs this separation, undermining multi-agency decision-making, and compromising the neutrality essential to fair and effective resource allocation in crisis. Third reason is mixing distinct statutory mandates. Under Guam law, OCD per 10 GCA Chapter 65 is tasked with inter-agency coordination, grant management, continuity planning, and policy implementation under the governor's direction. GFD under 10 GCA Chapter 72 is focused in firefighting EMS, rescue hazard, and NG 911. These are distinct mandates, and mixing them will confuse roles, responsibilities, and accountability, particularly during complex emergencies like typhoons or cyber attacks. Fourth reason, increased risk to federal grants and compliance. And yes, there have been challenges in grants management. The OPA audit highlights these real issues, but those are correctable through leadership, resources, and accountability, not by dismantling the agency. A reorganization in the middle of FEMA remediation may actually worsen compliance risk and further delayed reimbursements. Fifth reason, in my role as ESF2 who handles telecommunication, and the whole of island communication must remain at the EOC. As the lead for ESF2, I must emphasize, emergency communication is an island-wide, cross-sector coordination mission, not a GFD operational function. The Federal National Emergency Communication Plan is clear. This work spans telecom, broadcasters, ISPs, military, utilities, and more. To succeed, it must stay within a neutral emergency operations center, not a single-response agency. Six, national models do not support this reorganization. I've researched, and across the country like California, Hawaii, Washington, New York, and Florida, emergency management is separate from fire and EMS operations. Guam's current structure is aligned with these models and should remain so. Bill 179-38COR attempts to solve management and funding issues with a structural move that will diminish executive-level coordination, conflict with NIMS doctrine, and disrupt the clear separation of mandates between policy-level emergency management and operational response. The legislature can insist on corrective action, professional grants management, and stable leadership at OCD, but the proven motto in many U.S. jurisdictions is to keep emergency management separate from fire EMS rescue governance and to resource it correctly to succeed. For these reasons, I urge the committee to reject Bill Number 179-38COR and instead work collaboratively with emergency management professionals, the Office of the Governor, and federal partners to develop solutions that strengthen Guam's emergency management capability. Sis osma si.
Thank you so much, Lucy. Mr. Estevas, please, welcome to the public hearing room here at the session hall.
Hafadeh, my name is Charles Estevas, I'm the Minister for the Office of Civil Defense. Good afternoon, Speaker Bloss, Chairman, members of the committee. I'm here today testifying and want to state clearly that I'm in strong opposition to Bill 179. My opposition isn't about preserving an office or protecting a title, it's about protecting the integrity of emergency management on Guam, a system that has evolved over seven decades. Man-made, human-caused disasters, typhoons, earthquakes, pandemic, ballistic missile threats. It's a system that works because it adheres to doctrine and aligns with the national incident management system, which we know as NIMS. I read through the legislative findings, and it touches heavy on the OPA audits. It addresses compliance issues, documentation, timekeeping, fiscal controls. You know, we've gone through two oversight hearings on these audits. But I don't think the proposed solution is to abolish an agency. That conclusion is logically flawed. Nowhere in the audit does it recommend dissolving or transferring the agency. To suggest that because an audit found weakness, the agency itself must be eliminated is what we call post hoc fallacy. Assuming that something happened after an event, it must have caused it. It's a false connection that confuses cause and remedy. So, in my written testimony, I referenced several studies. And the first study I want to reference is July 2025 study from Argonne National Laboratory. Now, this is the Emergency Management Organizational Structure Study, also known as the EM study. Okay, this is Argonne National Laboratories, it's one of 18 national labs. This is the laboratory where the Manhattan Project, where the US discovered how to create the atomic bomb. And in this study, they showed that an overwhelmingly number of state emergency management agencies operate as independent entities reporting directly to the governor. Now, that statement alone does not make it, does not tell us whether or not that's effective. But in their findings, they state that direct report to the governor is a model that enables rapid decision-making and cross-sector coordination during disasters. They also found that when emergency management agencies are subsumed under a response department, such as fire, police, or public safety, that there is consistent budget diversion, reduced planning capacity, and diminished authority in many mission areas. Florida is mentioned as a model. The Florida Division of Emergency Management is a direct report to the governor. They do not report to a, to their, to any fire department or public safety. Now, if you want to look at local emergency management agencies, not at the state or territorial level, local emergency management agencies, there are a number that report to their fire departments. And these, that study, or the data can also be found in the Argonne National Laboratory report, and there's also a report by the National Association of Counties. However, I'll read several excerpts from the report verbatim. So, even if someone wanted to argue that Guam's size makes it more comparable to a county or a city, the same data applies. Local emergency managers working under fire departments reported experiencing role confusion, a lack of influence, a reactive posture focused solely on response. We have to remember, in emergency management, we don't just focus on response, we have five different missionaries: protection, prevention, mitigation, response, and recovery. Even that recovery is divided between short-term recovery and long-term recovery. So, here are excerpts from the July 2025 Argonne National Laboratory. Now, at the local level, at listening sessions, "With EM not being its own agency, I am the mercy of my chief as to what is being conveyed to the chief executive." And that's one statement at a listening session. And remember, Argonne National Laboratory, they surveyed throughout the entire U.S., to include all territories. Verbatim, "The parent agency often influences priorities, authority, and organizational culture through which the subordinate agency operates." Emergency management is often seen as a function specific to fire service, which results in a view that the needs of emergency management are fully inclusive of those of the fire department. When coupled with the understandable priorities of the fire department, our needs rarely make the top of, the list of top budgetary needs. Even when we're able to access funding, a significant amount of that funding ends up being spent on fire service programs. Next was, "Cities need emergency managers, and it needs to be their job." I love my firefighters, but it needs not be the deputy fire chief or operations chief because they're doing a lot of other things that are response-related, but are not planning beyond fire. Same of our police department. But when you're assigning it to someone else and it's an extra as duties are assigned, you're not going to get the same level of work, same level of time, same level of anything from that individual, because it's an extra that people only see for gray skies, not for our regular blue-sky days. Then it becomes very reactive, and we lose the ability to do all phases of emergency management. Another emergency manager said, "I've worked under both independent and subordinate agencies. When I worked under a fire department, our budget was considered their slush fund." And finally, one county-level emergency manager said, "Being in a fire department, my program is many times a stepchild and forgotten about." One of the findings in this report stated, "Free-standing independent agencies were 1.5 times more likely to report higher rankings for meeting community needs than those under a larger agency." That's just one study. The next study was published by the National Emergency Management Association in 2024. And it states, "Regardless to where the EMA is located, it is extremely important that governors have a direct relationship with their state emergency management director, including non-disaster time to build trust, mutual understanding, confidence before a crisis occurs." Looking at the bill, I'm confused on who the emergency manager is. It could be the fire chief, it could be an assistant fire chief within the bureau. It doesn't really state who the actual emergency manager is. It doesn't state who the territorial coordinating officer is. When FEMA comes on the ground, we're not talking grants. All they want to know is who's the GAR and who's the TCO. That's what they want to know. Additionally, there's nothing about this bill that modernizes. The bill argues that placing emergency management under the fire department will modernize operations. Modernization is not the same as consolidation. Modernization in government isn't about moving boxes and org charts, it's about introducing new systems. And what Senator Duñez mentioned, professionalization. Right? So, if the bill states something of, let's introduce new processes, that's modernization. If it introduces something related to professional certifications that emergency managers must have, that's modernization. None of that requires abolishing the very office that coordinates all of it. Under NIMS, the emergency operations center is designed to support, not command. The EOC coordinates resources, tracks situational awareness. We also advise the governor on strategic decisions, while allowing incident commanders in the field to focus on their jobs. Housing the EOC inside the fire department will collapse that doctrine because you'd be putting the coordination function under the same agency responsible for tactical response. The bureau chief for emergency management will report to the fire chief, the fire chief will then report to the governor. To me, that removes the governor's direct line of emergency management. Also want to add that further studies stated that they warn that adding layers of bureaucracy introduces confusion and delay in lifesaving decisions. That's exactly what this bill will do. But this bill tries to do a lot of things, it packages a lot of things. The other significant change is moving hazard mitigation to DPW. At first glance, that might sound logical. DPW, they build roads, bridges, facilities, and mitigation projects often involve these same elements, but hazard mitigation is not construction, it's not an engineering program. And when I state that, that is taken straight from FEMA policy guidance. It's a resiliency policy framework that connects how we plan, build, and recover as a community. Hazard mitigation is not strictly construction projects, it includes planning projects as well, includes studies on long-term hazard mitigation. Even FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program Guidance, updated in 2023, makes this crystal clear. Verbatim, "Mitigation should not be viewed solely as engineering or construction activity, but as an integrated policy approach that informs community development decisions." When you place mitigation under DPW, you transform a policy program into a construction project. You strip away the planning, risk analysis, and recovery coordination that make mitigation effective. Their job's to build infrastructure, not to lead cross-sector resilience planning or manage FEMA grants. There are additional skills and systems and certifications that you need, to include knowing how to do benefit cost analysis, long-term risk modeling. These are rooted in emergency management practices, not public works. In conclusion, Bill 179 is not modernization, it's misdirection. In the army, we call it lipstick on a pig. It will dismantle a proven structure. It replaces evidence with assumption and structure with slogan. The research is clear from Argonne, the National Association of Counties, and the National Emergency Management Association, that independent emergency management agencies perform better and faster. Instead of abolishing OCD, I urge this body to strengthen it through collaboration. And I thank you all for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Estevas, appreciate your testimony this afternoon. Which of us is going to be presenting? I know that you have yours, I guess, Nick, you're going to be presenting for the fire chief?
Yes, sir. This is my personal.
I'm sorry?
My, my testimony.
Yes, Senator, if you don't mind, I'll present for the fire chief and myself, but if you can allow him to go first before me.
Sure. Thank you, Nick, go ahead, please proceed.
Buenas tardes, sen Hafadeh, Mr. Chair, and the honorable members of the 38th Guam Legislature. My name is Fire Captain Nicholas Garrido, and I proudly serve as the Public Information Officer for the Guam Fire Department, while I also work in both operations and special operations. For over a decade, I've been part of this department, responding to some of the most challenging emergencies our island has faced, from fires, land and sea rescues, medical emergencies, and large-scale incidences. Because of this dual role, I've seen firsthand the delicate balance between coordination and operations, and how each depends on the other to protect the people of Guam. It's with that perspective that I respectfully oppose Bill 179-38. While I understand the support and support the intent to strengthen emergency management, I believe this proposal risks overextending the Guam Fire Department, compromising independent coordination, and reducing our overall readiness during crisis. The Guam Fire Department's mission is to protect life, property, and the environment through prevention, education, and emergency response. Over time, we've taken on more hazardous materials, land and sea rescue, and the management of Guam's premier 911 system, all while facing limited staffing, resources, and equipment. Adding a full-scale emergency management duties such as policy development, grant oversight, and recovery operations, as well as inter-agency logistics, would spread both sides of our department too thin. The same leaders who must make split-second decisions on the fire ground and other emergency scenarios would be responsible for administrative disaster coordination. That's an unrealistic and unsafe expectation for any emergency service. When lives are on the line, GFD's focus must remain clear: respond, rescue, and protect. One of Guam's greatest strengths during major incidences has been the neutral coordinating role of the Office of Civil Defense. The Office of Civil Defense ensures that all government agencies, the military, private sector partners, and community organizations operate under a unified plan and message. As a Public Information Officer for the Guam Fire Department, I've had the privilege of working closely with the Office of Civil Defense during major emergencies, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic and super typhoon Mawar. It wasn't a single agency that carried Guam through those events. It was the strength of joint partnerships and collaborative intergovernmental relationships that made the difference. The model of unity through independence worked. Each agency knew its role, and the Office Each agency knew its role, and the Office of Civil Defense ensured our collective efforts stayed aligned. If OCD's independent coordinating authority is observed under one operational department such as the Guam Fire Department, it could compromise the neutrality and oversight necessary for effective disaster management. Creating a Bureau of Emergency Management within the Guam Fire Department would require new administrative, technical, and planning capabilities, not currently within our structure or budget. Without a clear funding stream, staffing model, or transition plan, this bill could unintentionally collapse both systems, the one that responds and the one that coordinates. A better path forward: instead of consolidation, we should strengthen collaboration through embedded liaison officers between the Guam Fire Department and the Office of Civil Defense, joint training and exercises to enhance interoperability, and updated MOUs that clarify responsibilities while reinforcing communication. These steps preserve what works through cooperation and shared purpose without overloading any single agency. In conclusion, my opposition to Bill Number 179-38 is not about resisting progress. It's about protecting what works. It's about maintaining a system that ensures every agency can do what it does best without compromising another's mission. As both the fire captain and the public information for the Guam Fire Department, I seen that Guam's resilience comes from collaboration, not consolidation. Our island succeeds when responders respond and coordinators coordinate, when every agency moves together with clarity and purpose. Cesar Massey for your time and dedication to public safety.
Thank you so much, Nick. And if you can, make sure that our committee has a copy of your testimony so we can also share it with the Committee on Government Operations and Finance too, as well as you, Mr. Estevas. Okay. Joey, we're gonna go to you, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gumietao, Speaker Blas, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Duñez, and Senator Talley. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. Today, if you will allow me, I'll be providing or reading into record two separate testimonies. That's one of Fire Chief Darren Berger first, and then mine shortly after. Buenos en half a day. I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to express opposition to Bill Number 179-38, which proposes to abolish the Office of Civil Defense and establish a Bureau of Emergency Management Operations within the Guam Fire Department. While the intent to modernize Guam's emergency management framework is commendable, the proposal, the proposed transfer of operations from the Guam Office of Civil Defense to the Guam Fire Department under Bill 179-38 presents significant risk to operational continuity, federal compliance, and inter-agency coordination. I would like to take this opportunity to outline key concerns and identify what must be accomplished should the bill pass. One, loss of institutional expertise. OCD personnel possess specialized knowledge in FEMA coordination, hazard mitigation, and grant management. Reassigning or replacing these roles risks losing decades of institutional memory and federal relationships. Two, federal compliance vulnerabilities. OCD is a designated state administrative agency for federal disaster funding. Transferring this role without full federal approval and readiness may jeopardize Guam's eligibility for grants and reimbursements. Three, audit and legal liabilities. OCD faces unresolved findings from the Office of Public Accounting, Accountability, including improper overtime and reimbursed expenditures. Transferring operations before resolving these issues may expose GFD to inherited liabilities. Four, operational overload. GFD is already tasked with fire suppression, EMS, and rescue operations. Adding emergency management without dedicated staffing and resources risks burnout and diminished service quality. Five, disruption of inter-agency coordination. OCD serves as a neutral convener across agencies, including mayors, military, and federal partners. Housing emergency management within a response agency may reduce perceived neutrality and hinder collaboration. Six, hazard mitigation fragmentation. The bill proposes transferring mitigation planning to the Department of Public Works. This separation from emergency operations may weaken Guam's integrated disaster resilience strategy. If this bill becomes law, it is critical that we mitigate risks through the development of a strategic plan. First, a transition committee must be formed consisting of stakeholders in the system. This committee will help develop a strategic action plan to meet objectives. These actions must precede migration of operations. Premature transfer risks disrupting core functions such as disaster coordination, public alerting, and federal compliance. These action steps must be carried out in phases to complete strategic planning, conduct readiness assessment, execute migration, and monitor quality assurance. A phased and well-structured transition builds trust among the local leaders, federal partners, and the public. The proposed timeline in the bill is too soon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and provide testimony. Should your staff have any questions or require additional input, please do not hesitate to contact me. Respectfully, Darren D. Berger, Fire Chief.
Thank you so much, Joey. And you can proceed with your testimony as well.
Thank you, Senator. Again, please accept this testimony in opposition to Bill 179-38, which seeks to abolish the Office of Civil Defense and create a new Bureau of Emergency Management within the Guam Fire Department to assume those responsibilities. As a 30-year member of the Guam Fire Department and a key contributor to the transformation of the GFD into the premier government agency and emergency services it is today, I am honored by your confidence in our capabilities. The challenge of a new mission and addition of new resources is exciting, and we appreciate the trust implied by this proposal. However, I must respectfully express my opposition to the bill for the following reasons. Conflicting priorities and resource allocation. The Guam Fire Department, like any fire and emergency response agency, is tasked with an immediate tactical mission and operation that demands quick response and resource deployment to assess and mitigate threats to life safety and property. The GFD in particular responds to a wide spectrum of emergencies, including structural fires, wildland fires, emergency medical services, search and rescue over land and sea, hazardous material incidents, and conducts next-generation 911 operations, as well as code enforcement, public education, and training. Each mission requires a unique set of knowledge, skills, equipment, and leadership focus. The department already operates at the upper limit of an effective span of control, and absorbing additional responsibilities from OCD would risk operational command, integrity, and safety. In contrast, emergency management as performed by OCD encompasses a broader, long-term strategic planning, coordination, and operational approach across the entire government of Guam and island stakeholders. This includes enduring preparedness, mitigation, response, and recovery over a vast inventory of lifeline resources critical of infrastructure and operations. Different missions, scope, and focus. GFD operates under a clear, team-based, paramilitary command structure for specific complex emergencies. In contrast, the Office of Civil Defense, while using the same incident command structure, operates at upper echelons to coordinate a wide array of public and private partners with different roles, priorities, and goals. Merging these functions will lead to an erosion of expertise and diluted knowledge, which are the primary reason the International Association of Fire Chiefs and the National Fire Protection Association oppose, stating such a proposed consolidation would result in the overall degradation of fire protection of the community. Operational and staffing limitations. GFD already faces challenges with staffing, equipment, and training. Adding emergency management to our mandates would stretch personnel thin, create response fatigue, and reduce our ability to sustain both tactical operations and long-term planning. If this bill becomes law as written, it is critical that full absorption of existing personnel, funding, assets, and facilities be transferred while a complete assessment and the development of a transition plan is completed. If this bill becomes law, apologize as a repeat in the statement. So my final recommendation: rather than dissolving the Office of Civil Defense, I recommend strengthening it as a standalone agency, clearly separated from the Office of Homeland Security. Establishing clear lines of authority and responsibility will enhance transparency, accountability, and effectiveness. And strictly, this is in answer, specifically in answer to the OPA findings, both in Part 1 and Part 2, stating that their non-compliance status is due to the lack of consistent GHS/ OCD leadership and qualified fiscal and a grant management team. So therefore, my recommendations are to create a statutory separation between the Office of Civil Defense and the Office of Homeland Security to eliminate overlap and confusion. Create an appointed director. Require professional qualifications or certifications in emergency management, public administration, and ethics for executive positions, including the appointed director. Convert key positions to merit-based classified status in grants management, program coordination, and other necessary positions to reduce turnover and preserve institutional expertise. And finally, as stated earlier, rebrand the Office of Civil Defense, perhaps to the Guam Emergency Management Agency, aligning appropriately with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, clarifying its statutory authority to coordinate resources government-wide in response to natural or man-made disasters. The Guam Fire Department and its leadership will always step up during natural and man-made disaster response for call for succession of command should the OCD director be compromised. In the meantime, these actions would ensure continuity, increase transparency, improve efficiency, accountability, and focus in emergency management without compromising the operational readiness of the Guam Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joey. We're now going to go to Zoom. Dave Fukatomi, there you are. Half a day and good evening to you on the West Coast of the United States. You have the floor. Thank you, Dave, for being with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Vice Speaker, and distinguished senators. Half a day, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's David Fukatomi. I'm speaking as an interested individual who's spent a great deal of time on Guam. I speak in favor of the bill. Many of you know, I have over 30 years' experience in emergency management at the federal, state, and local level as a senior official leading disaster operations. I was the federal coordinating officer on Guam for Super Typhoon Pong San Wau. I was Deputy Director for Operations of the State of California, and Advisor to DOD for disaster operations. And in addition to that, I serve as a, in the public, private sector now as an advisor and educator. Many of you know, there's a joke that I probably spent about as much time on Guam as you legally can without having to pay local taxes. So I'm not a local, but I'm certainly in tune too much of Guam. But I speak to you today as an individual who cares a great deal about Guam and the people that I've had the privilege of getting to know and serve over my career. I could tell you, there's no better place, when a bad thing happens, unfortunately, there's no better place to work a disaster than on Guam because you really feel the appreciation, not just from the from the officials, some of which are here today, but from the people on the street expressing great appreciation for your contributions and coming there to help them recover. So that's something that everybody who works there from off-island takes away from them. You know, many, many important points were made today, and I'm not going to get back in on the back and forth of specifics or what happens in the past. You know, the public auditor made reference, as others did, to reports that identified recommendations that have not been addressed. But I'm in favor of the intent of the legislation as it looks forward to improve the situation and it doesn't dwell on a rehash of the past, which I think many efforts to improve challenges get stuck when you try to solve yesterday's problems instead of defining what the desired outcome is and look forward. So many have questioned why the firefighter. Well, again, I've worked closely with fire agencies my entire career, and in particular, I have a great respect for the Guam Fire Department, you know, represented here today. And they have a, they've demonstrated, and Chief San Nicolas is a perfect example of this, a deep pool of leaders who've been trained and educated based on national doctrine and standards. And I think that's really important. It's something that can be built on and should be preserved in however the legislation comes out. Also, fire departments can provide a deep and robust pool of additional resources in a crisis or even in normal times. A backfill or augmentation for operational needs for planning support, both deliberate planning like development of catastrophic plans or incident-based planning when you have something that's going off. And I don't think that can be underestimated. In fact, it's probably, most places isn't leveraged as much as it has, particularly though also given balance with the challenges of the operational needs of the fire department's primary jobs versus a secondary role providing mutual aid if you were internally to the jurisdiction. But one thing that can't be overlooked, you know, the fire departments are stable, professional organizations, and they're less likely to be impacted by the turnover and turbulence associated with political change. That's one thing, and I'll get to talk about the political change a little bit, the turbulence, that causes instability and inconsistency in emergency management and a lot of other functions of government. I do want to highlight too, and I know Chief San Nicolas in his testimony in behalf of the Guam Fire Department and others mentioned, it has to be appreciated the need for really good deliberate planning for the transition. Can't underestimate how difficult and how detailed it has to be. You know, the bill, as I've read, is sort of a framework, but the devil's in the details. So it'd be critical to analyze that from a, through a deliberate process, even if that might take a little bit longer than the period allowed for in the bill right now. Some of the other speakers mentioned about other jurisdictions. You know, it's true that no state or territory has emergency management under a fire agency. It's also true that with the exception of Guam, America, Samoa, and the CNMI, no other state or territory has a single fire agency that has responsibility for the entire jurisdiction. But based on population and responsibilities, if you look at many of the functions of the government of Guam, they're really similar to medium-sized cities or counties on the mainland. So for purposes of comparison, it's probably more relevant that you look at those examples than another state or territory. True, I come from California. California does not have a single statewide fire authority. They have lots of county, lots of volunteer, lots of local jurisdiction. There is a CalFire that has responsibility for state responsibility areas for fire protection and is a contract provider to jurisdictions, but it is not the statewide fire agency. And if you look a little bit west to your neighbor in the Pacific, just an international example. For instance, Taiwan has a single centralized fire agency, the National Fire Agency. It has divisions in each of its 20-some jurisdictions that provide what we would call, or think of, the local coordination. But it has one single fire agency which has responsibility island-wide for emergency management. And before anybody says, well, wait a minute, that's a foreign country, Taiwan has adopted their version of NIMS or the National Incident Management System, which many of the speakers have testified. That's the consistent system for collaboration in the U.S. for incidents. So if you look at the local jurisdiction model, it's pretty, it's not uncommon for emergency management to reside in county law enforcement or fire. In western states, it could be in the sheriff's department or the county fire. And in spite of reports, and there's reports that go both way on this, we're also seeing a trend that is continuing to be looked at or even that it's happening more frequently, and part of the reason is being driven by finances. Don't have to tell the folks on Guam, but all across the country, state and local governments are hemorrhaging, having trouble meeting needs in terms of deficits and budgeting. And so they're looking for ways to consolidate functions. So you are, for many different reasons, but including financially, you're seeing a trend in emergency management, or at least some jurisdictions, looking at consolidating emergency management within an existing function. It's also common for specific agencies, particularly metropolitan areas, to take a lead for what we might call specific emergency management or disaster management responsibility. So several jurisdictions might have the lead responsibility not entirely for mitigation under their county public works department, cost recovery disaster grants under the chief financial officer, the chief administrative office. There's also opportunities for reduction to duplication. You know, if you're going to consolidate, you have to look at, well, what functions? You know, if you're going to consolidate, you have to look at, well, what functions the two organizations have currently that you don't need to have duplicated? I can't tell you exactly what those are right now, but typically those are HR and admin support functions. And already, as many of the speakers have pointed out, there are divisions of traditional emergency management responsibilities on Guam. The Homeland Security Office has responsibility for certain pots of the grants, civil defense others, and the Guam Recovery Office has a responsibility for overseeing disaster grants in some large or wholly. So some of that's already being, is already divided up. In terms of consistency and sustainability, I mentioned a lot of this, so I won't go too far into it. But, you know, island jurisdictions, even in Hawaii, which has, you know, population a little over a million, strains to fill positions in government, particularly in public safety and emergency management because there's a limited pool of qualified leaders. Fire departments tend to have, you know, structurally, because of the requirements for certification, credentialing, and all that, a deeper pool of qualified leaders that are growing through the ranks. And that's a real strength if you're looking for leadership. And it has the effect of smoothing out the turbulence from political changes. Well, some jurisdictions may have a politically-appointed fire chief, but the ranks are filled with career professionals who have risen through the ranks and had to punch their tickets all along the way. So it's fair to say, well, what would I change? Well, perhaps the name. And folding, I think you have to deal with, do you want to go further with defining what the role of the Office of Homeland Security is? Well, the governor, of course, should, and most states does, retain the right to appoint a Homeland Security advisor, a senior advisor, but that's an advisor to the government, to the governor, and not necessarily an office. Even in some jurisdictions where there's a combined Homeland Security and Emergency Management Agency, it is not unheard of for the governor to have a Homeland Security advisor that maybe dual-hatted as a deputy chief of staff, for instance, on the internal staff, but not have line responsibility over operations. I heard, and I'm just going to mention a side note, not really part of my original testimony, that valid concerns about the Fusion Center, I suspect those can be addressed through the legislative process. I heard a lot of discussion about identifying individual aspects that need to be identified. Just some other thoughts in closing. When you think about, there's a lot of discussion about the federal grants. And when it comes to emergency management and homeland security, it's generally two pots you have to think about. Non-disaster grants, like the Homeland Security Grant Program, you've heard it referred to as HSGP, and EMPG, the Emergency Management Preparedness Grant. Those are non-disaster, statutorily funded, that come to jurisdictions for preparedness, planning, and capacity building. Those, I believe, are currently managed by the Office of Homeland Security and perhaps in some respects from civil defense, but largely it sounds like the Office of Homeland Security. So those come regardless of your disaster activity to do many of the things that other speakers have mentioned need to be done, build planning capacity, training, education, et cetera. Now, that's versus the disaster grants, which come with a federally-declared disaster, the Public Assistance Program, which pays back the agencies for their costs of responding and for the actual damages. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which pays for mitigation projects to prevent future disaster. Those are specific to a federal disaster that, and federal disasters, which obviously Guam is no stranger to. But those already, I believe, flow through the Guam Recovery Office, which if I read correctly, there's interest, or at least some interest expressed by the governor's office to perpetuate the existence of that office, to have a consistent recovery support function, which wherever that's housed, it has a lot of merit. I will tell you, related to that, and I heard some questions about it, but I'll just mention, you know, there's some question about, well, there's authority versus eligibility and reimbursements when you're talking about federal grants. Guam retains the authority, just like any, and autonomy, just like any jurisdiction, to take actions it deems necessary in the public interest to protect life and property. But it doesn't mean that it'll be found eligible for reimbursement. So I believe one of the senators might have asked about, well, what about getting things approved? Well, there is an approval process to get expenditures or things approved, a little bit different for each grant pot. But at the end of the day, Guam officials retain the authority to take the necessary actions. And if they document everything properly and comply with federal law, then also to request that that be reimbursed. So unfortunately, what happens in many cases is that we tend to make decisions based on grant guidance. But in a perfect world, we wouldn't do that, and we would determine what the best course of action is, determine if there's strings attached, if there's federal funding involved, and then seek reimbursement. So I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. We could go on for days about that. But sort of the disaster from non-disaster and how those are parsed out. I think, you know, I'm not going to underscore, no senior elected leader wants to give up the ability to appoint an individual into a position, but exceptions can always be made. And the HSA would still, I believe, in this bill, be an appointed physician, emphasis on advisor, the Homeland Security advisor, still appointed by the governor as an advisor. So that critical function, and it is a critical function, would still be retained. The governor retains the ability to appoint the fire chief, who is the senior leader of the organization. Positions in the Guam Fire Department below the chief, for the most part, I believe, are classified. And I think the intent of the bill seems to be that allow Guam Fire Department to propose what structure it needs to fulfill those responsibilities that are being transferred to in the bill and how those positions should be classified. So there's an opportunity there to, instead of just taking what's existing, is to say, well, what do we, what functions are priorities, how do we right-size, what are the right classifications? In closing, I just wanted to mention, you know, there's no doubt island jurisdictions, and I mentioned Hawaii, have challenges filling critical positions. The smaller the population, the harder it is. And that this bill does not necessarily make all that go away magically, but it does place these critical functions in a culture that has structure, doctrine, credentialing that could have the beneficial impact and should of providing some stability. I'm confident that everything I've heard and read about can be addressed through the legislative process. And in fact, you know, it's fair that all these get put on the table so that they can be addressed fairly in this legislative process. So in closing, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak. I realize I don't live on the island, but I do care deeply about the outcome. So thank you again, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dave. And yes, if you can, stick around for questions. I know it's almost nine o'clock there. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our public auditor and the former speaker of the Guam Legislature, Benjamin Cruz, for your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Senator, Mr. Chairman, and members of the legislature, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Vice Speaker, Mr. Chairman Doyanis, and Senator Terlai. My name is Benjamin Cruz. I'm the public auditor. I didn't come today prepared with a written testimony. I wanted to see what was going to happen today. And today I want to extend my congratulations and commendations to the Guam Fire Department for their honesty about what they can and what they can't do. And I was surprised. I was ready to testify against the bill if they were going to be like sharks and wanting to eat everything. I really congratulate them on recognizing what their limitations are, what they do well, and what they don't want to do because they don't want to stretch themselves. I think maybe Mr. Fukatomi was right. Yes, the intent of the bill is excellent. What you want is a department, well, Office of Civil Defense, run professionally like the Guam Fire Department. People who are competent, who have risen through the ranks, who are not political appointees, but are people that have earned the right to move up the ranks and take that position of responsibility. And if we could find some way to bolster and strengthen the Office of Civil Defense and Homeland Security, to have something like that where they, this morning's bill and this afternoon's bill, is married its certification, its education, its training, and its experience. And these men show that with their honesty and their willingness to come forward and say, no, we don't, I mean, we'd love, you know, building a fiefdom. I always thought all the agencies were looking to see what they could take. But I really admire the fact that they were honest enough to tell you, no, this is not one that they want to put into their wheelhouse. And that they, but they support the idea of strengthening the Office of Civil Defense. And I join them in their comments. And that's my testimony. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for your testimony this afternoon. At this time, unless no one else wants to testify, I will turn it over to the members of the legislature that are here. And I will begin with the, I'm sorry, is Ron, you getting here? Ron, did you want to come up and testify, or are you going to submit the written testimony? Oh, not a worries. No, thank you, Ron, for that. Okay, got it. Okay, at this time, let me go ahead and turn it over to the committee on Finance and Government Operations, who's co-chairing this particular hearing, Senator Cristianus. I'll give this mic off to you. Thank you so much again for your willingness to do this today. Appreciate it.
Seals Massey, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to this esteemed panel, as well as Mr. Fukatomi from Hawaii in the late hour joining us. What I failed to mention in my opening was that it wasn't just the finance side of it. It's the government operations side that really is under my purview and why we decided to do this as a joint oversight hearing. Chief Joey, I think you've given us a roadmap to really consider in terms of marking this bill up. I really appreciate your testimony, and I agree with, you know, the fine speaker Cruz that it is really, you know, commendable for the fire department coming forward and saying, you know, you have great intent here, but you don't see it as a fit at this point. And even saying, whatever transformation will take place requires a turnover and a structural, you know, transition. And so you've given us a lot of great guidance in terms of what the committee should do going forward. Once again, Chief Joey, as well, as Speaker Cruz said, the public auditor, I'm going to ask for the committee to take your testimony and also append it to this morning's bill, the hearing on Bill 184. Because exactly what you discussed is what the intent of 184 is. And that's where the public auditor came in and basically said, you've got to do something in terms of structurally professionalizing the Office of Civil Defense and Homeland Security. So we're going to thank your recommendations with great consideration. So moving over to the folks from Civil Defense. You know, Mr. Steves, I don't disagree with some of the things that you've said, but I think I kind of tend to agree with what the observations of Mr. Fukatomi was. And I say this because my question is going to be something that you've probably heard already from the national level. And we're talking really on the state level of operation, not counties and communities and the like. But I'm sure you've heard it from, nonetheless, the President of the United States, that there is a call for some sort of revamping, and it's not new, the discussion on what FEMA will look like going forward. The President of the United States made these comments while not being president yet, but having seen disaster coordination and other things in large states nationally and being quite disappointed with the response and the activity and saying that he would be looking to work with his cabinet and staff to revamp this organization. With that, I say, and I say this as a rack for over 10 years in prior administrations and understanding emergency operations and the duties and responsibilities at the agency level. Have you done any type of tabletop exercise, coordination, with knowing that there is possibly a federal mandate sometime down the road of what I think I've heard from the national level, from the President on down, is more of a state, and that's where we're coming to, and even from the testimony from Chief Joey, a state Guam office and what that would look like in terms of that type of reorganization? So I'll start with to my left and go over to you, Mr. Steves. I'd like your answer as well.
With all due respect, I think the Civil Defense Administrator should respond to that.
So you haven't done a tabletop exercise or coordination that you're aware of?
We have not done any tabletop coordination exercise based on how the President sees the revamping or the reallocation of resources for FEMA for states and territory.
Thank you. Mr. Steves?
No, we have not. Senator, we have not done a tabletop exercise or coordination. There's not tabletop coordination in the works or planned. Should we get the findings from the President's Committee on the Status of FEMA Moving Forward? And should the need arise on updating our planning assumptions? Then the answer is yes. Currently, we are still working on enacting Speaker Blas' bill, revitalizing the Guam Conference Emergency Management Plan, which is actually now the umbrella for all plans in our plans inventory. And the new emergency operations plan does have, under a planning assumption, that we may not receive any federal support, which means that we need to be able to operate independently, absent of any sort of federal support. And that's not just for, that's a planning assumption for, one, all events. Another major planning assumption specific for the upcoming threat annex, which is the Blizzard Missile Threat Annex, is we need to be prepared to respond without DOD support. And that's a very harsh reality, which means that we need to bolster local capabilities absent of any sort of federal support. We're on our own. And if we do have a tabletop exercise, it will reflect that we are on our own.
Thanks, Charles, because that's exactly what I took away from the recent conference that was held by DOD. And I don't think anybody in that room, you know, left there without understanding that there's a clear, clear line, particularly under threat, that the first response is MilCon and their mission. And so maybe you can see now that this is not an adversarial attempt to try to think outside of the box here on how to get to a structure that is localized at the state level, not just because of the concerns of the audit. But bringing that up, the truth and the reality right now is we have been locally funded for several years now, without any even appropriation from this legislature. I commend the governor and the administration, seeing the need and having to ensure that the continuity of operations is such that it's going to require and has required the general fund to the tune of $8.2 and upwards million. Like I said, that hasn't, never came to the Committee on Appropriations. Never was a budget hearing, never was part of any coordination, even in the governor's submission of at least my review of the last three fiscal years at a minimum. So we're not talking about something here that hasn't already happened in terms of funding the operation. And so to me, we've already taken that one step. But I guess my question would go to Chief Joey in terms of the recommendations that you've made in your testimony. Yourself, with your profession, and I think everybody here is very clear on congratulating the fire department on being the premier public safety agency in terms of their training capabilities and everything else in terms of the merit system that exists within the organization. Could you see a role? Could you see a role of multi-agency law enforcement groups coming together to at least help structurally flesh this out with the recommendation that you have made?
Yes, Senator, I absolutely do. And I think it's important to note the point that was made by many of the others about ensuring that this agency, whatever it becomes, is neutral in the multiple missions across the government, to ensure that the priorities of the, of the Governor, really, in response to disasters, man-made or natural, is dispersed appropriately, as opposed to competitive priorities.
I, I think the same thing. And Mr. Fukutomi, I wanted to bring you in on this, because I think your observation of Guam is absolutely spot on, and your experiences, meaning that when we're in an emergent situation, when we're responding to something that is particularly in our, when it deals with natural disasters, that's when everybody's at their finest. And you see pretty much lines disappear from an organization that otherwise structurally has a lot of components of the Governor's authority, appointments, and unclassified employment levels that, you know, can, can blur the lines from time to time. Is that your observation in our effort here to professionalize the organization more and kind of still have that operational level at the Governor's office in terms of the office and, and direct line, but in terms of the operations and, and leadership and classifying of positions to professionalize the organization?
Well, I, thank you, Senator. I think you're right. You know, there are, if everything was clear and easy, we wouldn't be having this discussion. But it's not. And I think one of the ways you clarify things in, in a crisis situation, like a typhoon or something, is by leadership structure and discipline. And that's why, you know, I have such respect for the Guam Fire Department, because that's what they do. I'll also say, and having seen this on Guam several times, when you get island jurisdictions or small jurisdictions, it's an all-hands-on-deck situation. And sometimes you have to make tough decisions about functions you're no longer going to do based upon the priorities established by the Governor and by the incident commanders. Those are tough decisions about, like, we're not going to answer certain types of 911 calls. We're not going to, we're going to shut off utilities in this area. We're, we're not going to be able to provide commodities or mass care for the entire population. So how do we do that? But that, to me, also speaks to, those are the types of decisions that firefighters and fire leaders make all the time about allocating resources against priorities. And I think that's, you know, that can't be lost, because that's what the essence of emergency management does. You can do all the planning, community education, but it's helping to facilitate making the tough decisions on a really bad day. And, you know, firefighters do that all the time. They don't even, it's second nature to them. So in, when you're looking for stability, structure, and resources, they're, they're a favorite place to go by lots of other people. Perhaps maybe not by the fire departments, but that's also why they have the best mutual aid system in the world, in the country, the ability to share resources, because you can send fire personnel individually or in teams from one jurisdiction to another, and there's a certain consistency. I hope that answered your question, Senator.
Yeah, it certainly did. And just in closing, in my observations and the discussion about, to be clear to those that have come forward today on both bills, the chairman, and I've mentioned him, and we've agreed, you know, in our conversations between the two hearings, is that these frameworks are going to take, you know, a longer duration of time than contemplated in the legislation. And I appreciate that, that chief, and also from Civil Defense, Chief Joey and others that have come forward today to really let us know that, you know, this, this type of transformation, even just to whatever it's going to eventually possibly be, is something that's going to be done over a longer period of time. But I just want to close with this. I remember one, and I'm glad it's operational now. I think one glaring example is how long we had even our alarm systems and village-level notifications in terms of what that took to get up and operational, and some of the things that we know that have been perennial. You know, I've, I reported to the gentleman to the right of the gentleman to the right, and that is Speaker Blas, when, in the administration, when he was the boss. And so I've seen all different iterations of the operation. And I think maybe they'll even agree that, you know, we need to do something. But I just wanted to be clear that this will be a work in progress and will take time to get done. But I definitely think we should have a product within this term to at least present going forward, and definitely on the level of the first bill, which the OPA concurs with, that there's some major strengthening that needs to be done with job descriptions, classifications, and the like to make a stronger organization. With that, thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to ask a few questions and have some comments.
Sí, señor presidente. Yes, thank you, Chairman Duñez, for your time and your, again, your willingness to partner up to do a joint hearing today. At this time, I'm going to now turn the mic over to Senator Tulahe. You have the floor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for your testimony today. There are some things, I think, that some of the testimony has in common, that is, they're talking about whether leadership should be classified or not, whether the leader should be appointed and confirmed, or whether the, and whether the employees as well should be classified or not. So I thought it was interesting, because it's almost a reverse of this morning, where now some of the recommendations are to, we have a classified director of the Office of Civil Defense right now by statute. And some of the recommendations are to make that be an appointed director, some of them say confirmed by the legislature, some of them say, yeah, that. And so I guess I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that. Why, what's, for those who've recommended that they be appointed instead of the merit system, why is that?
Thank you, Senator. That might be me to answer, this is my suggestion. So I see the Office of Civil Defense Administrator comparable to my actual position as a deputy fire chief, the highest classified position in GFD, as well as the Colonel of Guam Police Department, the highest classified position. And we all answer to an appointed cabinet official, appointed and confirmed by the legislature. We provide us, as the Administrator would, continuity in, in management throughout, no matter what administration comes through. And will allow for the appointed director, fire chief, police chief, or, in this case, emergency manager, to, who the Governor trusts to work with, that the Governor knows, and can help provide the guidance to the Governor, as well as direction to the classified service on the direction of the, of this particular agency.
All right. What about the staff, Director Steves? Can you clarify, are the staff of the office classified or not?
We do have several classified employees. We have one person in the planning section, one person in the public information office. We have one operations, who's also the training exercise coordinator. We also have two, one civil defense officer and a civil defense coordinator, who work in operations as well, include myself. The language, how it currently reads is, I may employ clerical staff, I may employ a stenographer, I think that was still in there in the old, old language of the bill, I got to check, or the old language of, of Chapter 65. But it doesn't really state who should or who should not be classified.
That's right. So how did you decide?
Based on needs and capabilities and, you know, the resources we had at the time. We know we need to have someone fill in the roles under instant command when we're activated. So we need a Finance and Admin Section Chief, we need a Operations Section Chief, a Planning Section Chief. We need someone who does, who's on the public information side to work in the Joint Information Center.
Are you saying, are you saying you've, you've turned into classified positions, all of those that are necessary?
Yes.
And the unclassified positions aren't necessarily necessary?
I have, I have no say in the unclassified positions.
What do you mean?
I, I, I don't oversee any unclassified staff. Well, besides one who manages the tsunami hazard mitigation grant program.
You don't have a say in whether they're hired or not?
I do not.
Okay. Whether we have those positions or not?
I do not, yeah.
All right. And then, everybody seems to agree that Civil Defense or Emergency Response, I guess, if they would call it that, Emergency Management System Office would operate separate from OHS? Is that correct, that I'm saying that, that everybody agrees?
I agree. It's currently right there in statute. I just, there are no qualifications to be the Homeland Security Advisor. There are none. So for an appointed Homeland Security Advisor, who could literally be anybody, for them to have operational control just, just doesn't make sense to me. And I don't know how many letters I've received over the years placing me under a Homeland Security Advisor, taking me away from a Homeland Security Advisor, placing me back under a Homeland Security Advisor. So it gets confusing, right? And the, the lines of coordination and what I can do and what can't, what I can't do, it gets blurred. I'm speaking very frank, right? I'm being very frank right now. It's frustrating to be able to want to move things forward, yet you have roadblocks. So to Chief Nicholas's point, I mean, it's already there in statute. I am Title 10, Chapter 65. Homeland Security is Title V, Article 14.1. It's there. But the public doesn't see it that way. And so I do think that rebranding to the Guam Emergency Management Agency is a step towards the right direction. I agree with that. I actually proposed that a couple legislative bodies ago, that we do need, it's then, it's not more than just a name change, it's not marketing, right? It reflects the update in our mission, that we are no longer the civil defense agency that was born out of the Department of Defense, and it later transitioned as sort of the catch-all for different disaster programs, and later on became FEMA, which is a cabinet-level position. And then, under the DHS reorganization, they came under the DHS umbrella. But if you look at how the, and this is the old DHS view, I don't know what FEMA's going to look like tomorrow, right, or next week. But the old FEMA Administrator was direct report to the President during emergencies. And they found that during Typhoon Katrina, and that's why we had the PREKROMA, the Post-Katrina Reform Act, because the FEMA Minister at the time, under this newly-formed organization, was reporting to the Homeland Security Secretary at the time. And this is why everyone blamed, I think it was Michael Brown at the time. And there was just so much confusion, because you had the Department of Homeland Security, and you had FEMA making decisions in parallel. And there's a lot of waste that went on. During emergencies, I just want to focus on the emergency. And a good litmus test is, if a ballistic missile were to strike tomorrow, where would you find, let's say this bill passed, where would you find the fire chief? Would you find him on the ground? Or would you find him in the emergency operations center? Okay? I would say you would probably find him on the ground, there, with the rest of his fire chiefs managing mass casualty, urban search and rescue, you name it. Versus the emergency manager, who's there with the Governor, with potentially a federal coordinating officer, potentially with, with the defense coordinating officer, looking for resources, looking how to, how to get the Guam Fire Department and other responders what they need during an emergency. Okay? Actively making sure that, and we have these tickets, right, in our, in our system record, DLAN, that they're answered, and they're not just stagnant, they're not open. Working in the unified coordination group to establish priorities, understanding that these priorities change potentially every four to six hours, which we saw in Mawar. So let's say state, the litmus test is, where would you find the fire chief? Who in the bill, I guess, would be the emergency manager, or maybe it would be an assistant fire chief? I'm not sure right now. And, you know, I would ask, you know, I never worked very close with Dave, and, you know, Dave, I do appreciate his comments, but the question to ask him is, how many lines should there be between the Governor and the emergency manager? Because I don't think it should be more than one.
All right. So you agree that the statute does not combine the two offices, Office of Homeland and the Office of Civil Defense? Those have been combined by Governors when, and some do and some don't.
Yeah. But the way the current grants management is?
What do you mean?
FEMA and DHS just sees us as one agency.
Department of Homeland Security sees you as one agency.
Yeah. And they always have this hash line.
Okay. So, so if we separate you, does that affect the grants from DHS?
It shouldn't affect the grants.
All right. The, yeah, because Homeland Security's functions, according to our statute, are those correct? It says, recover from terrorism, invasion, insurrection, rebellion, lawless violence, or the threat thereof, and yours are all the emergency response, even actually for, what was that other one I was surprised to see? From traffic to, to attack, an attack on us? That that would be under your, yeah, if an enemy attack occurs, it says. All right. So do you see an overlap between the recovery office that the Governor recently created by executive order and what you do for emergency response?
Not overlap, but I think the Guam Recovery Office is the best thing ever.
Why?
Because they handle the public assistance grants, which is a disaster-related grant. And when those projects are done, that, those grants and the office potentially sunset. But the Guam Recovery Office should be more than just handling the public assistance grants. When I talked about recovery, I talked about recovery in terms of short-term disaster recovery and long-term disaster recovery. When we talk about short-term recovery, we're talking about getting the power on water restoration, roads cleared, that's short-term disaster recovery. Now, the long-term disaster recovery, and this is where potentially mitigation gets rolled into, is determining the long road for economic recovery. Infrastructure, housing, right? When we talk about housing during, during short-term disaster recovery, we're just talking about getting people sheltered. But now we have to talk about what are potential housing solutions moving forward, so that the next time we have a disaster or an emergency, there are less people that require shelters. See, that's a long-term disaster recovery function. That's why FEMA, in their doctrine, they separated emergency support functions from recovery support functions. Recovery support function, the recovery used to be one emergency support function. So they separated that and they created six recovery support functions. And so we've actually had a lot of, when I say we, I'm talking about myself with Dr. Forrest Targaloff under the Office of the Governor. We've had a lot of discussions related to establishing recovery support functions. There is a draft disaster recovery management plan, which lists who the lead agencies are for these RSF. So when FEMA recovery support functions, when they interact, okay, they're interacting with agencies related to long-term disaster recovery. And these are very separate than the emergency support functions, which are really focused on response.
All right. I was just going to ask you, so who is going to interact with FEMA that would continue at OCD?
So that, so it's who the Governor appoints as the territorial coordinating officer. Traditionally, that's been myself for several disasters since 2015.
Is it per disaster? She appoints per disaster?
Per disaster, yes.
All right. Okay. And then, there's no dispute, I guess, then, that certain of the staff should be classified, and that's how we're going to prevent errors that happen in the audit? Do you think that's sufficient, besides your management plan and besides your plan to resolve what happened?
Yeah. So we're not a, we're not a grants management agency, we're a coordination agency. And so I don't know what the right solution is. Get a classified grants manager to oversee multiple grants under DHS? And there are multiple, right? You have the Emergency Management Performance Grant, you have Homeland Security Grant Program, Nonprofit Security Grant Program, you even have the Port Security Grant Program. Right? So I, I don't know if it will make it better. I do know that there are a lot of... there are a lot of corrective action measures that we have in place now and that we have actually implemented over the past year. To include one, the biggest one was timekeeping and tracking actual expenditures to the budget.
What about the emergency response expenditures that, for example, the government was clamoring for, that seemed to take so long? And then the FEMA reimbursements for those? Is that going to continue under Office of Civil Defense?
That's under the Guam Recovery Office.
So it's not just the public assistance grants?
That's the public assistance grant, yes. That's the reimbursement.
FEMA?
Yes.
All right, then, so they are going to be like our FEMA Recovery Office, our FEMA Reimbursement Office, our FEMA... So all the mayors are going to now submit their requests to them?
They have, yes. So the Guam Recovery Office is under Director Joe Cabana. They oversee all of that, all those grants.
All right. But in Mawar, weren't they submitting it to you?
Uh, they were submitting it to our office, but we've submitted those to the Guam... We've transitioned to the Guam Recovery Office, all of that.
All right, because that's where all of these, to me, questions begin for us locally, besides the grant, you know, comments and the OPA's comments. It's that, it's like, who are these mayors going to go to for getting what they need after an emergency? So if you are just in charge of, uh, kind of directing what they do or what everybody does, but you're not in charge of getting them the back code that they need?
Oh, no, during the... I'm sorry, Senator, you talked about reimbursements, but during the event, yes, our agency is responsible for coordinating their needs.
All right, okay, so those two things at least, yeah, those are, to me, what I want to resolve is this leadership, whether we need it to be a non-classified versus what it is a classified, and why? And then, of course, I don't think there's any dispute that the employees that we need should be classified so that they are meeting qualifications, so that we can impose qualifications, they have to meet those, and that we can ensure we don't have issues with the grants or with any other operations. But I really think, uh, Fire Department, there's some testimony. Mr. Tagina, yours has a lot of research in it as well, a lot of them do. And I, Deputy Chief, I want to ask you about this. You mentioned the, um, national, there was a International Association of Fire Chiefs and the National Fire Protection Association oppose. Did they review this bill?
Uh, so they have several significant studies they've done throughout time that talked about consolidation of public safety agencies across different states. Uh, and they've put out a, pretty much a blanket statement that any consolidation of public safety with any fire department that is not fire service-related, uh, they oppose due to the immediate response requirements and focus, leadership focus needed for the emergency response in the way we do it. So the biggest difference, if I can kind of separate us and what Office of Civil Defense does, or FEMA, is we are the tactical level, operational at the highest, down to the tactical level. Office of Civil Defense is more strategic and operational at that upper echelon, um, coordinating assets across agencies to assist us at the tactical level. And so that's the difference. So I know we use the word "emergency response" interchangeably, but the scope and practice and focus of emergency response between the two of us are at different levels. And so the more tactical you get, the more it requires direct supervision and commanding control. Um, so that's why the fire service as a whole across the nation, supported by the International Association of Fire Chiefs, of which I am a member of, and NFPA, which are the standards and certifications and, uh, operational guidelines that we follow as a Guam Fire Department, both state and opposed.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, let me now move over to Vice Speaker Tony Etta. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the panel for being here this afternoon. I think maybe Director Setas, you know, notwithstanding the issues that currently cloud the Office of Civil Defense, right? Do you believe that we can rebuild it again to be a stronger, more vibrant department for our people to continue this, the protection that it's currently mandated to provide?
Vice Speaker, I absolutely do believe we can. And, you know, it just requires more collaboration. Right, a lot of people say they like the intent of the bill and the bills they've heard. Classifying staff, having continuity, clear lines. I think we all want that.
Yeah, definitely, and I think, you know, looking at how the... Putting it with the Fire Department would be one thing, and like the public auditor said there, Chief Joy, that, you know, he's glad you guys came out and said, "This is something that we can't handle." It's not that you don't want it, it's just something that should not be within the Fire Department. Is that correct?
Well, Vice Speaker, now you're challenging my firefighter can-do attitude. And given that my education is focused in emergency management, I would take that on as a challenge. Uh, but that being said, I do also agree with, again, the statements that have been made that this is, I believe, a focus that would require a lot of thinking, a deliberate transition plan, if any, if we were to do it. Uh, but in the end, I wholeheartedly support personally that it should remain at a higher echelon, neutral position, other than the fire service.
All right, thank you for that. Because also, you know, I was looking at the transition period, I think it was March 2026, where, you know, should this bill pass, that it goes over to the Fire Department? Is that a realistic timeline in transferring the operations and such over to the Guam Fire Department?
As I stated in my testimony, if this was to go through with, based on the bill's timeline, I would ask for the entire agency of Office of Civil Defense to include its Office of Civil Defense Administrator to transfer over while we figure this puzzle out.
Yeah, definitely. So I guess, you know, in going through the markup and seeing how we can make this actually become a... I guess a win-win, right? A win-win for Office of Civil Defense and Fire Department. And I know that earlier this morning, we were doing the classification on what employees should be classified or not classified and working on that. And I believe that as we continue to work and strengthen the Office of Civil Defense, that we'd be able to make it a... I think, I think I have to, you know, say that working with you folks and ensuring how we can make it better than, that should be the end result. And if putting it under the Fire Department is something that everybody's going to agree with, fine. If not, then, you know, let's see how we can strengthen it, make it better so that we're not traveling down this road, you know, and doing it again, or a different administration comes in, or things like that, that we're redoing the cycle all over again. You know, that's not what we want to do. We want to hand off things, and when we hand it off, we hand it off a lot better than we received it, right? And not just for the immediate future, but futures after that, you know? So that's that continuity that goes on. And I, this COVID-19 was actually a whole practice for everyone, where we, what were our shortcomings, where were our strengths? And, you know, prior to the COVID-19, you recall, right? We had that tabletop, the, over at the back, Pacific Star, doing everything, mass casualties, and... But yet, came the time, we recall, I was called up to Civil Defense a couple of times. You know, what's our capacity, what's our strength, what can we do and not do? And, you know, my frustration was that we've done this, we just went through this tabletop not too long ago, and now you're asking me, "What's my capacity and what's my strength and weaknesses?" But yet, when I told what my weaknesses were, we didn't receive any assistance whatsoever. So I think, you know, how we can make things go for the future in finding those shortcomings and strengthening them, then I think it'll be great. I mean, just like one of my colleagues was talking about fallout shelters. And I said, we used to have, um, buildings throughout the island that had fallout shelter signs. No matter where you went, as a matter of fact, our place was a fallout shelter. So I think we need to just dust off the binders, look for where all those fallout shelters were so that we can go back to those establishments and, you know, find out with them, say, "Hey, you know what, you were a fallout shelter back then, is it something that we can continue?" And, you know, and that's just helping the Office of Civil Defense, right? And I believe that you can do it, you can strengthen what we have now and continue to build. If this bill does not pass and it doesn't go anywhere, then that's what we've got to work on, is working on strengthening the Office of Civil Defense. Because, you know, that's what's going to benefit all of us, right? The people of Guam, so thank you for your testimony, so.
Thank you so much, Vice Speaker Etta. Speaker Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for being here. Just a little history lesson, I'm the one that caused this problem. Mr. Estevas, are there clearly defined roles between the Homeland Security Advisor and the Civil Defense Administrator?
Now there are.
What are they?
Uh, so the Homeland Security Advisor, and we talked about the five missionaries. Homeland Security Advisor is primarily on the protection and prevention role. A lot of it deals with terrorist, the prevention of terroristic attacks. And when we say terroristic attacks, I know we think of 9/11-type of terrorism. Um, but, you know, that's expanded. When we had the bomb threats, that was handled by the Office of Homeland Security, the one that GDOE. And Homeland Security and GDOE developed this risk assessment matrix to determine whether or not schools would be shut down depending on the severity and the level of the threat, even though there are hoaxes. Critical infrastructure is a Homeland Security function. The Mariana Regional Fusion Center, whose primary duty is to gather different bits of information from different agencies and put together into actionable intelligence, that's a Homeland Security function. But when we talk about emergency management, we talk about the Office of Civil Defense, it's a coordinating agency. A coordinating agency, and that's why during a presidentially-declared emergency, the governor appoints a territorial coordinating officer, also known as a state coordinating officer in the mainland. And that coordinating officer will work with other coordinating officers. And our main role is to determine what resources we have available in Ireland throughout the different government of Guam agencies, to determine what resources may be available from partnering jurisdictions to the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, to some extent, determine what resources are available with our federal partners, so we know what to ask for. And that's what we primarily do in emergency management. We're not down in the ground, trying to direct things at the tactical level. We want to ensure that all our operatives at the tactical level get the resources they need. They get the information they need. That we're able to understand the entire picture, to provide good situational awareness and understanding. And that's actually how I understand the roles. The distinction gets blurred. And that's only because of how we send out releases. You know, we send it out as two agencies with a not a consolidated, but complementary mission. Should there be an actual terroristic attack, or attack on critical infrastructure, or a cyber attack, I won't be the incident commander. Okay, that'll be primarily on the Office of Homeland Security. But my role will be to provide that office with everything they need. That could be subject matter expertise, that could be specialized equipment, whatever. And whatever the consequences are. I forgot to mention the consequence management of it. What happens after? Homeland Security is a before-the-boom type of agency. I'm an after-the-boom. Where we work before the boom, that's in training exercises, increasing preparedness, understanding, operational readiness.
Thank you very much. Um, along those lines, then, in being able to function in those areas, in the separate areas. And there was a mention earlier, and you'd mentioned it earlier, about the different grants that have to be managed out of out of that entity, okay? Can you name, with you and Lucy? Okay, what are the primary grant programs? And who's responsible for these primary grant programs? Who is the administrator, or who is the, I guess, the personal anxious for it?
So I'll start with the, so there are non-disaster grant programs, also NDE grants. And I'm now responsible for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. There is the Homeland Security Grant Program, which is a DHS grant. It's not FEMA, it's a DHS grant. FEMA assists because FEMA has the personnel and staffing for grants management versus DHS. When we talk to FEMA on any FEMA grant, they normally have a staff of about three to five people that we talk to. Um, Lucy, when I'm finished, Lucy can talk about, you know, her relationship with the one grants manager that she coordinates with on the Homeland Security Grant Program. And then there's the Nonprofit Security Grant Program. There is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is overseen by the Hazard Mitigation Office and the State Hazard Mitigation Officer, which is Lloyd. Oh, Lloyd, yeah. And so they have their own charge. But even that grant, like the Public Assistance Grant, is a sunset. When the projects are done, and that funding is done, uh, then the personnel either have to move on to another grant or potentially another office. But those are the primary grants, Senator.
Okay, um, what about your Fusion Center? What program does that?
The Fusion Center is an investment justification under the Homeland Security Grant Program.
So it's an HSGP grant?
It's an HSGP, and the grant itself requires a certain percentage of the grant to be used in law enforcement, terrorism prevention activities, LETPA.
Okay, so there is basically, what I'm getting at is there is the necessity for the separation?
Yes.
And I appreciate that. And let me, recognizing that, as far as the Fusion Center, maybe Lucy can answer this. Okay, as far as the, one of the requirements for the Fusion Center, who is the responsible person? Who is the, ultimately, the individual that has to sign off on the Fusion Grant Program?
For the Fusion Center, which falls under the Homeland Security Grant Program, the authorizing official is the Homeland Security Advisor.
Homeland Security Advisor?
Yes, sir.
And one of the, can you explain why? I mean, what are the requirements for Fusion Center? Um, to be able to operate the Fusion Center, basically to operate as a Homeland Security Advisor? What's the requirement?
Well, the way it's written up, because it's under the Department of Homeland Security, they have certain mandates that deal, like HSA, I'm sorry, OCD administrators said, of taking a look at things before and training and intel analysis.
Interesting, intel analysis.
Yes.
Does that require some type of clearance?
I'm sorry?
Does that require some type of security clearance?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so what kind of clearance does it require?
Secret.
Top secret, actually.
Well, secret for the analyst, and then for, I would say, for the director and the HSA, depending on what their interview is.
In order to be able to get into your secure room, what kind of clearance do you need?
Yes.
You need a top secret clearance, don't you? I know this because I built that.
Yes.
Right? Okay, so there is a requirement?
There is a requirement.
For your Homeland Security Advisor?
Yes.
Despite what Mr. Estevas said earlier. I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay. Um, so, you know, I appreciate, and you're the concern, Chief Joy, you're right, you know, with regards to operationally, tactically, and strategically. You know, there has to be that separation and that. I just want to make sure that in this transition, if we're going to transition into something like this, we have to take in full effect that even at the emergency management level, there can be come times that, a lot of times, we associate emergency management response to, again, hit the ground running. But then tactically and legally, there may be some responses that are pulled outside the purview of the Fire Department, which needs to be addressed. Am I correct? Am I correct? Can you, can, can you elaborate or expound on that a little bit more?
Uh, I can, I can agree to that, uh, Senator. Chapter 72 specifically describes our mandate and our left and right limits as far as, uh, our authorities within, uh, in our response, our, our response mission.
Okay. So let me give you a little history as to why this chaos exists, okay? Back in 2002, when I got appointed as the Homeland Security Advisor, I was also the territorial coordinating officer, okay? I was the S, at that time, we called it the S E O, because we were in the midst, we were in the aftermath of Taotan and in the midst of Pung Sanwa. So I needed to be able to operate out of a space that could provide that kind of coordination, okay? Office of Homeland Security just found itself in that operations center because it was convenient to be able to do the operations at that time for, for that reason, okay? That's why it's there. And I'm sure that, as Chief Joey will tell you, and even Lucy will tell you, eventually, as things calmed down, then I moved the office back to Adalou, okay? But then after that, it somehow transitions back to you guys. So that was supposed to have been that plan, okay? And, and I, yes, you're right. I, as the Homeland Security Advisor, and Chief Joey can, and, and Lucy can attest to this, for all intents and purposes, Charles, that's your operation. At that time, I support you to get your, your, your resources outside of what you've got inside, okay? In times of terrorist activity, then I, you support me in being able to provide the boots on the ground. And there's never should have been this massive confusion, okay, in that. I think that as well, because it was mixed in this fashion, caused that financial chaos that existed, all right? So, um, and I appreciate this exercise because it helps to bring to light, maybe as a result of all the massive confusion that has gone operational, operationally and administratively, there has been a confusion as to who is, you know, who's on first and what's on second, okay? And in this exercise, if there's any win-win in this thing, is being able to separate that. And I see that my time is up in the back, so I'll go and wrap that up. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please, Speaker.
Um, I'm not sure if, I'm just confused. But when we were doing our audit, it was my understanding that it was the Governor's Chief of Staff that was responsible for all the grants that both of these officers were getting. They were applied for in his name, in the name of the governor.
And there, there lies a lot of the confusion as to where it went, how it transitioned.
Because I had, we had to report to them. We, we sent our letter for the engagement to the Chief of Staff and the Governor because it was our understanding that the Governor's Office and the Chief of Staff was the recipient of the grant, and as a recipient of the grant, then gave it to these various individuals.
You are correct.
But along the lines of the confusion from, from the good public auditor, it somehow morphed into now and evolved into, into that process where initially, it was through the Homeland Security Advisor.
It seems like very traditionally over time, uh, public auditor, that when we think of the operations or emergency operations in Guam, much a hundred percent of it was always something like it was an extension, uh, traditionally, uh, because of exactly what the speaker had mentioned.
And can I just make, just a
Please.
Final closing comment. I would invite the members to please read in the appendix of the, of the audit report, the transition reports that were, were, were prepared by the various transition committees before the Calvo administration, before the Leon Grover administration. In both of those, it was very clear in those that they found that it was the presence of too many political appointees to these two, two organizations who were not experienced and had no understanding what was going on that was clogging up the works. And just as I messaged it this morning, I think, though, God strike me for saying this once, but, oh, the Congress may have been right in the organic act when it said all employees of the government of Guam must be in the merit system and classified with the protections. I think, um, Colonel Sinick was, is correct, or Chief Deputy, um, all the agencies really should have in their, in each of their agencies, a person who rises to the top from within, who understands the operations of that department, who can run that, that, that operation, who understands, who can do everything. The direction only comes from that political appointee, and it showed, should only be one. There shouldn't be ten political appointees underneath. All of those should be classified employees who were there because they meritoriously deserve that position and have been working their way up and through it. You know, I, I've always been, I've always admired the fact that, that in England, the United Kingdom, they manage to have short-term elections and the Prime Minister changes. One day, they move everything out and the new one moves in, and everything continues to operate. That's because in their civil service, in their classified service, they have people like Joey and the Colonel and other people who rise to the top and are the, really are the, the brains of that thing, of, of that operation and the operation. The, the appointee that's named above them, the secretary or the, the, um, Minister for whatever, comes in to give direction on what their priorities might be. But it's for them to, to know with, with his or her priority, that's the, this is the direction we take this. But they know that operation inside and out. Every agency should have that kind of, 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 um, structure so that it continues to run when, when the top person goes. And it's, it can only do that with a classified service. That's why 20 years ago, when Doris was insisting on, uh, having unclassified employees, I kept saying, no, that's impossible, because if you ever leave, then you're going to take, everybody will go with you because they're unclassified. They've got to stay because they have the institutional knowledge, they have the operational knowledge, and they should continue to run the operation. And you just come and say, I'd much rather turn you to 15% to the right or 15% to the left, or continue down the same road that you've been going. But the, the, these professionals should be the ones that runs the department. But with one caution to all of you, please remember that these are very well-paid professionals. And if we're going to do that, we're going to have to pay them. Because you're not going to be able to, to poach any of these guys to help them and assist in running homeland security or civil defense because they're not giving up the positions and the pay that they're getting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have just a couple of questions if I can. I know, Dave, you're still there, right?
I'm here.
Thank you, Dave. Real quickly, can you, uh, when we think about this particular bill and the climate, especially with the, um, changes in Washington, D.C., can you just, uh, expand a little bit based on your testimony earlier on, uh, if this is not the solution, at what point will we have to have a solution?
Well, um, there's a lot there. I, I think, you know, the important thing is, and the testimony has backed this up, is you've got to clearly identify what the critical functions are in the homeland security, in the emergency management, disaster space, and make sure that you've accounted clearly for lines of responsibility, whether it goes into this new organization, whether it's going to remain with the Governor's Office, either in the, say, the Recovery Office or the Office of Homeland Security. It, uh, well, if you look at many states or territories, the homeland security function, the emergency management function are in one office, notwithstanding the fact that the governor can have as her own homeland security advisor as an advisor as part of the executive staff, but not as an office. So, a number of the speakers have brought up question or about who's responsible for oversight of a certain particular grant, and it seems to me that's still kind of, kind of hazy, uh, for Guam, in that if nothing else, it fragments, you know, having a strategic purpose for employing all the grants against the highest priorities. I, I don't know if you can predict what's going to come out of the changes. Remember, the FEMA Review Council is just going to make recommendations to the President, and then it's up to the President and, uh, perhaps ultimately Congress to weigh in about what they're going to enact. But it seems clear that there's going to be a reduction in some of the things we can count on, and I would say things of the preparedness nature are probably most at risk, and then downsizing of, or, or shouldering of more responsibility by states, territories, and locals of the response and recovery. Let's be clear, states, territories, locals always had a hundred percent of the responsibility. They were getting supplemented by stuff or money reimbursement from the feds. That, that could be greatly reduced. On the front end, it might mean less direct federal assistance, which for Pacific jurisdictions, you know, that's been vital. I also think, uh, there's been some discussion about the, what we would, what we call now the homeland defense environment, that is, um, non, a non-natural disaster threat from a nation-state or something. What's that going to mean? Well, in the Pacific, we rely greatly on military support for civil authority to get everything there afterwards and provide a great deal of resources. You can use commercial to get there before, but afterwards, from the West Coast to the United States West, if the military isn't decisively engaged, uh, you know, FEMA and the federal government aren't going to be able to move much stuff. I think it's true that you're going to have to become more self-reliant, or really, it's just a matter of whatever you have, you're going to have to make do with. Uh, I think that's pretty clear, uh, in, in that space. But I would count on less federal financial assistance, and really, the only question is how much less at this point. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does, yeah. Thank you so much, Dave. And again, I know it's about 10:20 Pacific Standard Time, but I appreciate you, uh, being with us and offering up your insights. So thanks once again. Appreciate you.
Well, thank, thank you for the invitation, and, um, thank you to everybody for their service there, and, uh, you, you, you know, for what it's worth, kind of my continuous to support. Obviously, I wouldn't have spent so much time, um, trying to help make, help all of you make things better, so thank you and good luck with this.
Yes, this is Masi and mahalo again for your help. Um, I have to have one question for the public auditor. In one of your audits, you mentioned the, you know, that at some point, we're going to have to use or spend, uh, general fund monies to help support emergency management. Can I ask you that when we look at the policy and the emergency management fund, does that meet some of your requirement considering what could be down the road, uh, more reliance on our local monies to pay for responses, especially for emergencies at a larger level? I know it's another fund we're going to have to manage, but I, I ask that. And it was created, uh, in that so that we can protect that.
Um, I, I, I really will have to get back to you because I, I wasn't focused on, on having that question of, uh, using the general fund. But because of the importance of the operation, if we can't afford it, we're going to have to pay for it because it is a very critical need, especially in this day and age.
All right, thank you so much. And Joey, one of the things that you mentioned earlier was that from an echelon point of view, the Guam Fire Department, uh, really, it's, doesn't ever get there in terms of echelon, but I, I, I mean, the reason why this whole bill came about, I think people forget that when it comes to fire prevention, you are the highest echelon for building, if I wanted to build a new home or a construction project, you are having to deal with the upper echelon, uh, in this community to deal with a lot of the regulatory matters that face us. Uh, you also mentioned, uh, your rescue team. If something happens at our port, uh, you're, they're coordinating with you and the Coast Guard at a higher echelon to be able to deal with anything that might be on our oceans. Again, the fire department's rescue team, uh, I, I wouldn't doubt that you're, you're just going to sit back. You guys are at the up, at the, at the table with, when we think about echelon. When we think of, I mean, I mentioned the prevention, the emergency medical service, you are now being compared to many emergency rooms. You are now the higher of echelons when it comes to medical service. So when I think about the, the reason why this bill was, uh, was even proffered, it goes back to the idea that in 2025, you are not dealing with the echelon, you are the upper echelon in terms of how we deal with things. And, and all due respect to, um, to civil defense, I think that when, and your input was critical today. I think all of us, if they did not know or had an understanding of what you do, I only have the one question I have, and I think, I'm, I'm, I know that the, the committee chair had to leave, but recognizing, again, we mentioned earlier that BB Mar said that the Budget Act does not provide a direct appropriation to the Office of Civil Defense. What local and/or local or federal funding source supports the entity's operations, that is, civil defense today? And general fund or special revenue accounts, special funds are involved, under what appropriation or authority are these resources used for the Office of Civil Defense?
Senator, so I charge all my time to, uh, the FY23 Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Again, and, um, so I appreciate what you're saying. I, I think that what we are seeing also is what the audits produce too, but a very great insight. And I appreciate the candor, Joey, uh, and that of the, the chief. I think some of the transition periods, uh, what I have appreciated about being a member of the 38th Guam Legislature is the markup process. And when we're going back in, these things are not going to be lost on us. Even when you said, well, we might be challenged, but I think you, the challenge back was like, oh, I, the can-do attitude, uh, sometimes when you're good, I think people recognize that and are trying to preserve certain things for our community. Not, I know that this might sound crazy, but, and I want to use a statement that was made by the speaker. When he was a young police officer, one day, he had to, he had to call in because he wasn't sure if he was going to wear a fire uniform or wear a police uniform. So at that point, that transition was just as challenging as the one we are facing in 2025. All of the input today was greatly appreciated, and I just want to say that, um, I think that we're not done with this particular measure. I think there was great input, and I do appreciate all of you being with us today. If I can, I'm just going to go ahead and close, and we'll, we'll conclude this. I, there's been much compelling testimony here today, and I hope that it made an impact on my colleagues that are here today relative to this particular measure. And I'm going to, let me renew my challenge today, not to you guys, but to those up here and those that are not in attendance or may have left the hearing since it started and are not members of the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and the Guam National Guard, or the Committee on Finance and Government Operations. I ask that other senators, please provide your input in the coming days as outlined in our rules, back to these two important committees. I would ask them to send an email to office.senatorsean@guamlegislature.gov and senator.duenias@guamlegislature.gov with your input and recommended changes to make Bill 179 better, as many of my colleagues have mentioned, especially across the way on the floor over the last six sessions with other policies that we have addressed since the start of our term. For the record, ideas to change any part of this particular bill works in our process here at the Guam Legislature, again, even to my, to the leadership of the branch. Your thoughts, that you are against it works too. If you are, let our voters and our citizens be the judge of the level of contribution, my colleagues, that each and every one of us can bring to Bill 179. And I thank you all in advance for your support. And I thank you all in advance for your support in the markup process of 179. That's our job. That's what we are elected to do here in the Guam Legislature. Now, many in the room and that are watching on our legislative channel were perhaps asking, "Why the Guam Fire Department to be our lead emergency management agency?" Well, it all starts with the success of our GFD fire cycle, specifically the first in 1985. It is our fire cycle education that has since underscored the value of combining theoretical knowledge with practical experience. Through hands-on training, firefighters could develop critical skills before working in real-world, high-stress situations. This approach has since enhanced knowledge and reduced the risks of on-the-job learning. Now, the Guam Fire Department's fire cycle and similar fire academies in America, it highlights the importance of tailoring training models to meet local needs. For 40 years, GFD has faced unique challenges in accessing training in contrast to their mainland counterparts. It is this flexibility that's since allowed this respective public safety field to professionalize and meet the needs of the industry and in service to the people of Guam. And I think that the Governor mentioned it in the graduation, it all comes down to this solemn role that they face, as she mentioned in her comments this past weekend. Our emergency response agencies, like the Guam Fire Department, manage disaster planning, recovery planning, and many other plans year-round. As I mentioned, the idea of this notion of echelon. GFD works directly at facilities such as fire stations and rescue stations. They manage specialty vehicles and equipment and oversee human capital, in this case, the men and women of the Guam Fire Department. They also coordinate and network with our partners, our neighbors, and other territorial, regional, and federal officials to secure necessary contacts in an emergency, when and where it happens. In 2025, this has never been a more important combination of skill sets needed to serve our island community in a new role, in a new time, in emergency management. The National Fire Protection Association defines emergency management as, quote, "ongoing process to prevent, mitigate, prepare for, respond to, maintain continuity during, and to recover from an incident that threatens life, property, operations, information, or the environment," close quote. This is just one definition that shows that emergency management is in fact evolving. Guam's nearly 75-year-old law has run its course and will make way for a structure and a culture that will be helpful for our modern-day emergency activities. The command structure has evolved, and with it, processes that can better utilize critical local and federal funds. The long road of accountability and credibility for our emergency management teams, I believe, can be helped and will be helped with this policy. And I do appreciate all of the testimony that was presented today. I want to publicly thank the Chairman Duenias and his Finance Committee and Government Operations for their leadership in assisting the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Guam National Guard for today's public hearings. At this time, the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and the Guam National Guard, and the Committee on Finance and Government Operations appreciates all your collective attendance and participation of all senators and community stakeholders in this joint public hearing on Bill Number 179-38. Our committees will review the information received during today's public hearings and communicate further with relevant government and non-government entities if necessary. Markup meetings on Bill Number 184-38COR and Bill Number 179-38COR are tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, October 28, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. It'll be here at the Guam Congress Building here in Agonya. Members of the Public Safety and Finance Committees are invited to participate in the markup process. Our committees, the Guam Legislature, will continue to accept written testimony on Bill Number 184-38COR and Bill Number 179-38COR for the next five business days or until October 21, 2025. Again, as I mentioned, testimonies may be submitted via email to office.senatorshaun@guamlegislature.gov, through the Legislature Mailroom here at the Guam Congress Building, or they may be delivered directly to my senatorial office here in Agonya. With that, today's public hearing on Bill 184-38COR and joint public hearing on Bill 179-38COR are hereby adjourned. The time is now 3:33 p.m. tomorrow, standard time. Thank you all for being with us today.